Real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of a public body. And number two, in accordance with 2.2-3711 to A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel, sir.
Mr. President, I move to the second. We go into closed session, a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we're in closed session.
For the closed meeting, please state some of the reason prior to casting your vote. Mr. McCotter.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. This is the Monday, October 20th, 2025, Meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome those of you who are attending in the public meeting room and those that are watching online. We're going to start the meeting tonight, as we always do, with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be by Mr. McCotter. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. I humbly ask for our Father's continued guidance as we tend to the county's business tonight and every day, from this building to our firehouses, courthouses, to town halls, and in every deputy's cars. I'm grateful and comforted that we can take refuge in the Lord no matter what we face as Louissans. May we never forget that while the world is constantly shifting, we serve a God that never changes. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams?
I'd like to add under information, discussion items, a presentation for the Resource Council update.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I'd like to take number nine on the consent agenda off, adopting a sign implementation implementation plan.
Off in general?
No, discussion. Add it.
Do you want to move it?
Move it, yeah.
All right.
I'd like to also move number eight to that discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Improrpedy moved in second that we adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the adoption, excuse me, the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Second that we approve the minutes, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Improrpedy moved in second, we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move with the subtraction of eight and a net.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Mr. Goodman had talked, sent an early email about resolution of appreciation for Gerald Ballz. Does that need to be in here or is that just?
No, sir. We'll consider that direction to staff and develop a resolution accordingly.
Thank you. That's all I'm.
All right, do I have a second? It's properly moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is recognitions. We don't have any recognitions this evening, public comment. I don't believe we have any cards.
Ms. Hartz here.
Ms. Hartz here. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board?
Oh, you're back.
Yes, sure. Yeah. Come to the, come to the podium and you can give your card. Mr. Goodman will take your card. State your name, your voting district. You'll have three minutes. I'll give you a warning when you have 15 seconds.
Keenan, Dakota, Mountain Road Voting District. And I want to talk about the landfill. Is that the right moment? Okay. So I just would like you all, somebody, put a pavilion there to distribute good stuff. Like maybe an 18 by 20 pavilion, even a slab of concrete. As a frequenter of the landfill, if we're going to be expanding it, the lake traffic brings a lot of good stuff that farmers could get another 20 years of use out of. And people are, you know, what people are doing now is just setting stuff aside that is like, you know, chairs that aren't broken. is like, you know, chairs that aren't broken and things like that, so other people can grab it. And I wouldn't want there to be like, you know, a lot of labor to go into it. So my vision is that there's just this pavilion, open pavilion, people who want to can put stuff there, other people who want to can pick stuff up, and that every Friday, whatever organizations can come and volunteer, and there's a big dumpster next to it and just throw everything in the dumpster. That's my proposal. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Hart?
Vicki Hart, Louisa, Virginia. Sorry, I was here before the card. I have a question about water. Not that you haven't heard it before, but if we're going to rely on the James River as our water supply, I'm sure you are aware that Henrico County has been unable to withdraw water the last few days due to the low water level in the James. Now, they built a 15 million gallon reservoir, and when the water level is low in the James, they're required to pump water back into the James River, which is what the purpose of the reservoir is for. So my concern is that I understand that we're relying on water tanks to store water in for the times for when we cannot withdraw water. So my question is, are the water tanks of sufficient size to provide the data centers that have been approved for use that will be drawing off of it? And my other concern with that is that that Northeast Creek is the sole water supply for the town of Louisa and is an occasional source of water for the town of Mineral when their wells are not functioning. Right now, we have no assurance that water is provided to our locality. So I would like to see the county look at providing us some documentation that we will be insured a stable water supply for all town residents. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If anyone else who wishes to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, move on to information and discussion items. The first is a presentation, which is a VACO Achievement Award that is presented by Cindy King.
And Jeremy Bennett.
Oh, and Jeremy Bennett with VACO. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. As a former resident of the Greensprings District, every time I get to come to Louisa, it feels a little bit like coming home, and certainly it's always good to get out of Richmond and come here. So as said, my name is Jeremy Bennett. I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties, and it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to present Louisa County with a VACO Achievement Award. For the benefit of your constituents, may not be familiar with the Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934 to support your efforts as county officials. First is through our advocacy efforts at the General Assembly and at the federal level. We also support your efforts through our educational programs, member services, and communication programs. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative solutions and approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. And I'm very pleased to present Louisa County with an Achievement Award for the Enhanced Tourism Program. And just for a little context, this is VACO's 23rd Annual Achievements Awards Program. We received a record 155 entries this year, of which there were only 57 winners selected from 33 counties. So as you can see, it's a truly competitive program. It's only 37 or 36% of entries were selected as winners. This is Louisa County's ninth Achievement Award. Louisa County has also won in the past the Best Achievement Award overall in 2012 and the Best Small County Achievement Award in 2019. When our judges were evaluating programs, they asked if the program offers an innovative solution to a problem situation or delivery of services. Does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation? Is it a model that other localities might emulate? And does the program, is it based on programs from another public or private entity but represents an innovative approach for customization by local government? And reviewing the tourism program, you all have a lot to offer in Louisa, whether it's the historic Greensprings District, Trevelyan Battlefield, and certainly Lake Anna. So the fact that you developed a program in-house with, I believe, zero county staff full-time dedicated to it, and taking advantage of your TOT and, you know, putting those revenues to good use to diversify additional resources with county is phenomenal. So I don't know if there's anyone else from the county here who wants to brag about the program, but it's definitely, someone who could speak to it with more authority. But we definitely really appreciate your submission, and it really highlights what Louisa has to offer. So I'll step aside for a moment, please.
Yeah, if you have to provide a little bit more context, and I was happy to hear you kind of touched on some of the criteria for the award submission, so that's what I wanted to kind of just highlight here. This is a total 30,000-foot view, so we'll just fly through this kind of quickly, but touching on some of those pieces. So in the award submission, we talked about collaboration, and one of those pieces was our Tourism Advisory Committee, which the board is very familiar with. But to anyone that may be watching or maybe attending here that's not familiar with that, that committee is comprised of different representatives from across the county, representing different tourism sectors. So it's a good opportunity for us to have some really great minds from some, you know, really great businesses and different attractions from across the county come together and give us some good ideas that we really weren't having before within the previous years. Partnering, so it says easy participation and tourism support requests. So the easy participation, we'll kind of get to in the next slide, but the tourism support request, that process is new for us. So we kind of informally refer to this as our grant process, even though they're not technically grants. But this really does help us have really good collaboration with some local businesses and nonprofits in the area, and we're really strengthening our partnerships this way. This allows us to have really strong coordination between us and then whoever's leading that effort, whether it's an event or some kind of new project on the side of the attraction. Strengthen content for Visit Louisa materials leading to return visitors. This doesn't just necessarily mean return visitors to the county. This is actually visitluisa.com or other materials that are our content, because if we are seen as a source of good material for people wanting to come to us to find out what's going on in Louisa or what there is to do here, that's a good thing, because then people will keep coming to us to find more information, and that helps everyone participating in our programs. So that's an all ships ride with the tide situation. New area collaborations, these MOUs really have been wonderful, and, you know, one of our bullet points has been for events, partnering with a lodging partner. So, you know, these different event coordinators have been going out and talking to different lodging partners in the area and developing different deals, you know, 15% off if you stay here, and then it's a free event ticket or whatever they come up with. So they're talking to each other now where they may not have been before. Supplemental analytics, we have a lot of different sources of analytics, and we've been really fortunate to be able to leverage analytics from the state and do a lot of this low cost, because a lot of these systems are very expensive. But we are able to supplement all of these different pieces of analytics that we get with now with what our partners are giving us. So we can say, okay, who came to the event? Like, how many people did you actually see and who did you advertise to? So we're getting this information from them as well, so we can layer that in with what we're doing. And educational opportunities. So it's a good opportunity for us to talk to them and have these conversations. Here's what we can offer you. Here's what the county is doing. And also for us to learn about what they offer, because sometimes, you know, when we're not having these conversations, we don't know what they can provide. We just don't know what we don't know. So this is a good opportunity for us to have those conversations. Innovation, this is, I think, a huge piece that was in our award nomination. And the highlighted yellow piece, this is what we ask of the businesses, and then in the blue piece is us. So with the businesses, we ask, have a Google Maps listing. Any event you have, put it on Facebook. So we want them to do that anyway, because we want them to have that visibility. We do not want to impact business operations. We want things to be as easy as possible on them. And then with our system, we try to just tap into what they're already doing with that. And then through a series of a few different softwares, we're able to just pull all of that and go approve, 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 and it pulls into all these different places, with the exception of the weekly emails we do and the monthly guide we do. Takes a little bit more manual, you know, work on that end, but still a lot easier than if we were going through and trying to scour and get all this information ourselves. So the amount of staff time it takes is incredibly minimal in comparison to, you know, if we were actually doing all of this manually. So this is huge. Again, we're just trying to really get that information out there, have a Google Map listing, have your events on Facebook. We have a tourism program guide. This is what we keep pushing out to the businesses, but also what we refer to in the nomination as our model, where we would recommend that other localities start so they can learn about our program, because there's a lot in here. We really kind of try to detail out what we're doing, and we give, you know, how, where we're advertising, our numbers, where our feeder markets are, because we want our local businesses to understand what we're doing so they can follow our lead and join us in these efforts. And then the results and current status section, this was a chance to, you know, obviously give the results information, but also a chance to brag about things that weren't necessarily in the timeline that was covered in the nomination. So we talked about things that were kind of outside of that. So I threw in here the Tourism Ambassador Program, because that was outside of the nomination period, but that's something that we're really excited about. So, you know, and I put in a couple of lines that were in the nomination that, you know, what is a challenge as far as having no dedicated staff? We've kind of turned that around into what was a challenge into a competitive approach to the market. So, yeah, that's hopefully not too fast of a fly-through of what's going on with tourism, but a little bit of context on how this award came to be. So we really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And I have the award right here, and Mr. Goodman, if it's possible, maybe get a picture presenting the award with the board.
Come right up here. Both of you come right up here.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, Cindy, you.
Cindy, you're the, you, this is you.
And I will say, once we get the pictures, we'll post them on the website, and the program is already there to share with counties throughout the Commonwealth, and hopefully they follow your example and they can do that. So here you go. Congratulations.
Before you both, before you both go away, Mr. Bennett, we appreciate VACO recognizing the county, but a great deal of this effort, almost all of this effort, is done by Mrs. King. And she is our Community Engagement and Tourism Manager. Matter of fact, Mr. Woodward and I were having a conversation today about something else, and if you don't mind me sharing what you said, Mr. Woodward said we are extremely blessed to have Cindy on our staff. She does a phenomenal job, and I think by the recognition that you gave us today and the quick presentation that she did, we very much appreciate your impact on Louisa County. So it's very well deserved. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next is a presentation on the Louisa Arts Center, Karen Welch, and that hides the first row there, but I could see the top of your head, so I knew you were there. So.
Thank you. Okay, so good evening, chairman, supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak to you and to present our annual report for the last fiscal year 2025. I'm pleased and proud to report another successful year at the Louisa Arts Center, and our focus last year, and always, but last year in particular, was actually on collaboration. You should hopefully all have this here. Yep. Okay, I'm just literally going to pull out some highlights. So our focus was on collaboration with other organizations in our community. And I have to say, following the presentation that's just occurred, the Louisa Arts Center are very grateful to the County Tourism Board. They sponsored the first event of this fiscal year, and we presented them with information that they put on to Visit Louisa. So it was great to work together and great to work with Cindy, I have to say so. We appreciate the work that tourism are doing for us all. And as always, we are committed to fiscal responsibility by balancing our budget to ensure long-term financial stability for the Arts Center, as you'll see from the financial summary page. And I'll just touch on a few highlights here. We achieved an income of $419,000 last year. It was below our budget, but, you know, if you don't aim high, you're never going to get there. So we aimed high, we didn't quite make it, but we did actually have a 3% increase on last year. But obviously, the most important thing is that we actually kept our expenses in line with our income. So virtually dead on percentage-wise, what we spent is what we brought in. Now, we did have the second half, this last year was the second half of the payment of our house lights in the theater. That was a substantial amount, $76,000 it cost us. We paid $30,000 the previous year, and then the year that we've just finished, we raised another $45,000. And the lights are beautiful, aren't they, Vicki? Beautiful lights in the theater. So what we have on that financial summary page on the right-hand side, you'll see in order of income, at the top, the most of our income comes from our ticket sales, going through to grants, donors and sponsors, fundraising, and the all-important money that we get from the county. Very grateful for that, and it represents 14% of the total income. So as I always stand here and say, we feel it's very important that we raise funds in as many different ways as we can, but we really appreciate it, because it's very important that we get our grant from yourselves. And then just turning over to accomplishments, we had a record-breaking last year, or the year before last, actually, eight sold-out shows, and then last year, nine sold-out shows. So we're going in the right direction, which is really good to see. And we sold just over 3,100 tickets, so a little bit more than last year's 3,000, so gently edging up. And we actually had our first annual arts scholarship for college students or for graduating high school students. Now, we have a scholarship fund, which we give to all children in Louisa for any of our events or activities, so that they can access our events and activities. But we also wanted to give a bit of a start to any of our high schoolers that were interested in taking arts further. So we awarded our first one to Kelsey Lagon, who has done a lot of work with the Arts Center, and it was very well deserved. We also had our second annual Louisa's Got Talent, and we had more auditions than we had space for acts this year, 34 auditions for 25 acts. It's becoming more and more popular and really showcasing the local talent we have, so it's really good to see. And of course, our gallery, very important, our gallery, we have six shows a year, and we had over 350 artists who put their work into our gallery. So that's a great tourist attraction that's enjoyed by a lot of people locally. And we also had our first musical since before COVID, which was all student-led, and that was from director to stagehand to the actors, The Diary of a Wimpy Kid. So that was fabulous to see, and it was great to be able to support and develop our high school students in their creativity. Into the middle section of the annual report, and we touched on the collaboration that I mentioned at the beginning, which was our focus for the last fiscal year. We worked with Parks, Recreation and Tourism to actually look at the offerings that they gave and that we gave to complement each other rather than being competition. So we, you know, obviously have the arts and the entertainment, and James and his team are focusing on health and well-being, so that we're offering a well-rounded service to our community. We also support members of the Arc of the Piermont and also the Community Closet with our arts bus. And once again, we've had Charlottesville Ballet come, and they are an annual fixture now in our season. We worked with Riverside Center, the Dinner Center from Fredericksburg. They asked to bring a play to our stage, which was great. Our reputation as a great venue is growing, and that was lovely to see. I don't know if any of you came to that and saw the famous actress Sally Struthers was on our stage, too. Very good to see. Also, thanks to Rappahannock Electric, their workers, for lighting up the Arts Center. They've lit it up now for the last two years for our classic Christmas event, and that's for the community, a free event that we raise money throughout the year so that families can come along, have a ride in a horse and carriage. Father Christmas is on the stage, or Santa is on the stage, and there's hot chocolate smores by the five p's. It's a lovely family day, and we open our student art show on the same day. Rappahannock have just have just really, um, taken that to a new level with all the lighting on the outside. Our biggest collaboration though, last year was with the Louisa County Public Schools and that was with our arts bus. Now we took the arts bus, um, to visit all four elementary schools and we had, uh, what gave the opportunity to over two and a half thousand elementary school students to be creative on our arts bus. And the reason we did this is because the school have a great project and most of you will know about the, the STEM steam project, the science, technology, engineering, art and maths, or math. Um, but we really wanted to help them enhance the A in STEAM with our arts projects. Um, it was very rewarding for all involved and it was great to see so many young children, um, creating on, on our arts bus. And then just onto the last section, um, our purpose, we try to ensure we serve as many citizens, um, of Louisa County as possible. And our focus this year and into this coming fiscal year is affordability and accessibility. To do this, we will still maintain our ticket prices below $50, even though the performers' prices have gone from three or $4,000 for an event up to 10 to $12,000. We are reliant on a lot of funding and a lot of sponsors and we're still pushing that, but we still hold fast with our ticket price to be below $50 for all events. We are going to continue our scholarships. Um, that is an easier ask. Um, people will always support the children. We'll continue the, the two scholarships. And we will also take the arts bu- bus out to those that can't get into the center. So some groups that have accessibility problems, we will take the arts bus out and we'll take our, our art out to them. Um, we also want to ensure that the center and our arts bus is ADA compliant and that's going to be a focus for this year. Uh, we're going to, we've started already to, to raise funds for a ramp for the, uh, for the arts bus. We have one already in this, the center to the stage. Um, and we have, um, one of our members of staff in a wheelchair who is going to be the, the ADA co- uh, compliance coordinator. Um, she's very well placed to advise us to ensure that we do what we can to make it accessible to everybody. And obviously we're going to continue to offer a diverse range of events and activities. And if you look at the, the second to last page, the year ahead with lots and lots of pictures on there, um, we're going to be very busy. We, we have our first adult and, uh, children musical, which is Matilda. Um, and that's, uh, that's going to, um, be fabulous. That's the first weekend in, in November. Um, we're going to introduce Charlottesville Opera. And that's a new form of the arts that we haven't seen here. Um, it's going to be really more of an educational, um, piece for the children, but all, all ages are welcome. Um, I, for one, have not been to opera. I've been to many things in London, but I haven't been to the opera. So I'm looking forward to that and grateful that they're going to come over to us. Um, one, uh, one show I do have that, which I am bringing over from England is, uh, Charles Dickens's Great-Great Grandson is actually coming to perform a Christmas carol at the beginning of, of December. And this is his farewell U.S. tour. So we've literally just got in right at the end, but I'm really grateful he's coming. Is, there's a lot of interest for that. So that should be a really great time. Um, and many more fabulous events to brighten up the lives of, of the citizens of our county, which is what we're here for. And then the final pages of the annual report, um, really are, um, our donors and sponsors. We couldn't deliver any of this without financial donations from our supporters, um, to whom we give our heartfelt thanks. Um, and last but not least, on behalf of my Board of Directors, I wanted to count, uh, thank the county and the supervisors for your support, which is absolutely essential for us to not just survive, but to flourish, prosper and succeed for many more years. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Welch? I, I have a comment, maybe not a question. Um, and I, I've mentioned this to you since you've become the executive director. Um, when I was first elected to the board, the board appropriated $60,000 a year, the same that they do now. But at that time, it was over 30% of your budget. Now it's 14% because the arts center is moving in the right direction to expand that. And I just want to give you a shout out for that. I think that's, I think that's outstanding work on behalf of the arts center. And, uh, I know my, we took our, taken our granddaughter there a couple of times the last year to see some plays and packed house. She enjoyed, we enjoyed it. We all enjoyed it, our whole family. So it's a, it's great, great contributor to our community. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Thank you.
Next is a discussion, uh, landfill usage and expansion. Mr. Coon.
And Chairman, members of the board, uh, this is going to be an update to a presentation I provided to y'all back in May. Uh, one of the updates that we actually were able to get is we get updated disposal numbers at the end of the fiscal year. Um, so that's what I'm going to focus on now. So in recent years, uh, the landfill has been averaging about 22,000, almost 23,000 tons per year, uh, with an annual growth rate of about 4.62%. However, between 23 and 24, which is the information we just got, there is a 16.99% increase, which is quite substantial. Uh, it has increased the county landfill tonnage to almost 28,000 tons and we are on pace this year to do about 29,000 tons. Uh, with that update, uh, just reminding people of where we are. Uh, the current landfill cells that we have, two and three are projected to last until 2031. Uh, we do have two more cells that are in the process of either being permitted or about to be permitted. Uh, cell 4A horizontally fills the space between the closed cell, which is the one you can see that has the turf on it and it looks nice and green and the current cell, which is partially green and partially dirt. Right now it's being filled in. And then 4B will be, uh, basically built on top of those. That gives us just under 1.8 million tons of capacity. Um, based on historic numbers, that would be about 53 years of capacity. However, with the more recent train, changes and trends, we're looking at closer to 34 years worth of capacity. Um, so just an update, this is the, shows you, we're estimating it 6.1 years of capacity on the current cell, but with growth and what we're seeing is going to be closer to five years. And then the A and B, like I said, if we maintain normal growth, it'd be 53, but more recent changes, we're looking at closer to 34 years. We already have part 4A is approved and 4B has got tentative approval and we should have it by September, October of next year. Um, funding and operational impacts, we do anticipate $2.8 million for construction permitting and compliance for cell 4A and B. Uh, this is funded through CIP project. You all see it every year. It's a reoccurring line item that we account for. Um, the benefit of these additional cells, there's going to be minimal impact operation because essentially we're just taking it and filling the trash on a different location on the same parcel. Uh, we're going to use the same infrastructure, same scales and a lot of the work is going to be the same. Only operational impact is going to be, of course, the waste volume and then different composition if it takes up more airspace. But one of the crux of why we're here today and just want to brief the board on it is long-range timeline. What we're looking at is between permitting and all the requirements and approvals with DEQ, it's going to take between five and six years to move forward. Um, with that, we have to be permitted within 20 years of needing the site. So early access to the site is going to be really important. So as you can see the timeline, we're going to need to basically have property acquired and start the permitting process here between 2030 and 2035. With state regulation requiring landfill expansion, we're going to have to have the permitting nearly complete or, or very significantly, uh, close to completion between 2040 and 2044 for that usage in 2060 and 2064. And of course, that's if we're able to utilize the full, uh, 34 years. Some considerations that we do need to count for is Virginia DEQ actually proposed increasing setbacks and buffer requirements for new and expanded landfill cells. Uh, that did make it to the governor's desk and Governor Youngkin did not sign it this year, but we can assume that they are going to try, uh, to have those increases back in the next governor and, in the foreseeable future. Um, and another one is they do intend to have a permitting enhancement and evaluation platform, uh, which is supposed to help streamline the process. Um, but we're going to go ahead and hold the five to six-year timeline. Um, we also are looking at contingency planning and alternative measures. Uh, of course, you know, risk factors that we can't account for are unexpected increases in waste volume. Uh, we always have the option to haul it out of the county, but then you have a significant expense as well as vehicular, uh, large truck traffic. Uh, there's other alternative measures that we can evaluate if it comes to that point. Um, but one of the things we just want to touch base with the board today, let you know that, you know, cells four and A provide between 34 and 53 years of additional capacity, depending on growth trends and if we stabilize or if we keep growing. Um, we do have everything squared away for cell four, but with future expansion, we will need to start looking at some land acquisition or different options for what we're going to do in the future. And, uh, we need to start doing that sooner rather than later. Uh, and staff does plan to bring, uh, options to the board when they become viable. And I stand ready to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Coon? All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is a presentation or discussion with the revenue committee update. Uh, starts with Mrs. Colvin.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Um, the revenue committee has been working committees, we've mo- with multiple committees through the last few months have been working hard about analyzing our potential future revenues. Some of the potential new revenue sources that will be key in the next five to 10 years are Amazon Web Service, real estate and personal property taxes would be a new source of revenues. We based our assumptions on 25 data centers. Dominion, um, we could potentially have a modular reactor. We looked at possibly one being in place in the next, um, several years and that would bring a new public service corp and real estate and personal property taxes for that. And then there could be potentially other things that we don't know about yet, but these, this analysis would help with any future revenues potentially. So some of the considerations were to make a plan on, on a way to spend the revenues as they come in. We talked about doing this with allocations. Also, we wanted to look at debt, um, satisfaction as a way to bring down the debt payments. And then soliciting public input would be a part of what was, was suggested as part of this planning process. This is the debt. The top line shows our current debt payoff. The second line shows if we paid off the two loans we have with VRA. They're the only two that have a call date that we can pay off, but that would bring our payments down a little bit through the next years. And then the last line is if we also wanted to look at potentially some of our JRWA that we have with Pluvana, that could be a potential that we could look at as well. But the top one, if everything's done, even if we leave it as is, 2055, but the payments would be much lower if we pay off the two, um, in that time. The school debt, we are unable to pay that off before it matures. Uh, some of the recommendations that, um, we wanted public input on was potentially to do a ser- we want to do a survey to get public input on how the citizens would like to prioritize initiatives. These were some of the initiatives the committee, um, came up with. And then we'll put a place for other so that citizens can give their input if it's not one of these items of things they'd like to potentially see. And to recap, um, we want to develop allocations in advance. If that's a, what the board so chooses, but the allocations could be, so as incoming revenue comes in and based on a percentage, then we could allocate it to these things of importance that are determined during this process. And we can show separate commitments on our, um, balance sheet. So whatever the allocations that we determine, we can put the money there and it will be spent on those purposes. So next steps, um, would be to finalize and publish our survey out and then review those results, finalize the allocations. So that y'all would review this and determine what allocations. And then, um, a focus would be put on tax rebates and reductions during that part of that process as well. I know that was quick. This is more of a recap. We've been kind of talking about this last couple meetings, but.
Any questions or discussion or anything?
Does anyone, Mr. Brown, do you have anything? I'm going to ask you to go back about two slides.
Yes.
Right there.
Okay.
Um, well, first of all, just a little background, the revenue committee was formed, I think, in late January, early February. And it's been a rotating committee. Uh, first was Supervisor Jones and Supervisor Woodward, uh, then Supervisor McCotter and Supervisor Barlow, and then wrapped up with Supervisor Barnes and myself. And a couple of things that I think are, are worth pointing out to the public is if you look at the, the recommendation all the way through has been that this potential new revenue, um, is allocated on a percentage base, not a dollar basis, not a fixed dollar basis, because as the revenue comes in, it, it will change every year as it continues to go up and, and move back and forth. Um, so it's on a percentage basis. And, and one of the things I want to point out, uh, and I think this is, uh, from feedback from our constituents, is that the tax rebates and reduction percentage in this final draft, uh, moved from 5% recommendation to 13% recommendation, uh, because it's, I'm speaking for myself now. Um, my opinion that, you know, the citizens of the county deserve to have a positive impact from what I think is very smart economic development. Um, and I, I think as we move forward, when is the survey, uh, projected to go out to the, to the community?
If the board is okay with these categories, we can go ahead and get that out in the next couple of weeks and get that out to everybody.
Well, we'll stop and see if anybody has any objection to that because I'm, I think you're looking for direction to make sure.
We are, yeah.
Does anybody have any, any concerns about that? So.
So we'll go ahead and work on getting that out.
We'll go ahead and do that.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make clear, um, we discuss a lot of things, but I want to make people understand that, uh, affordable housing was discussed. And one of the things we want to do with affordable housing is to try to attack it from a private standpoint where it's done sustained on its, on its own from businesses or people that use those services and that we're not doing it from a taxpayer perspective. So I don't want people to think we did not have those discussions because affordable housing is very important. And so we want to try to take another approach to that, uh, trying to work with the Housing Foundation and different things of that nature.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Real quick, um, for those who are listening or will be in, understanding this information and, and they're saying, well, why would I, you know, take time in my schedule to fill out a survey if, you know, there may or may not be, uh, any, um, additional revenue? Um, I would ask, um, Deputy Finance Chair Colvin, just to remind everyone, when it is we think we may be starting to get some additional revenue from the, the different technology overlay district projects?
We'll begin to get some revenue in '27, but the substantial dollars, it'll be 2030, 2031 before we have substantial to.
We need to know what people want us to do with potential additional revenue as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I have to agree with you. Um, we need to know what citizens want because I think this additional revenue that we have coming in needs to go back to the citizens. We need to invest this into the county and into all of our lives. And, and for me, one of the biggest, most important factors for me is, um, looking at tax rebates and, uh, looking at our personal property tax and how we can lower that and how we can give aid to our citizens and maybe be the first county to give a significant reduction in that. Um, maybe even if we're lucky, look at eliminating it. I don't know what it'll look like, but I think that, uh, we need to hear back from the residents and make sure that's what they want us to do with this money.
And I would, I would echo that. Um, speaking for myself, not for the revenue committee, um, and I've said this since we, you don't have to stand there. We're finished. Thank you. Um, is I would like for us next year in our budget planning to focus on a goal of a 15% reduction in the personal property tax rate, uh, with a goal towards eliminating the personal property tax in this county within the next four to six years, based on the revenue that comes in. I think that is a significant positive impact on the citizens of Louisa County. So, um, but I want to thank everybody for their efforts, uh, on this committee. And I, I will echo what Supervisor Jones said, um, as this survey goes out, for people to, um, express your opinion, express, put your input in, um, so that the board has an idea of what, what the general population thinks. So, um, I think this has been a very, very positive exercise. Uh, next is an update from the Louisa County Resource Council. And here is Executive Director, Mr. Lloyd Runnet. Mr. Runnet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Administrator. Um, thank you for allowing me to come this evening. Um, I haven't talked to you in a while and just thought it was important to just come visit and just give you some information, right? Because there's a lot going on. There's a lot of questions about food insecurity these days. So the main thing Satan uses, right? He uses the tools of He uses the tools of confusion and fear. And so what I want to do is put put that to the side, right? I want to give you some, what we're doing at the Resource Council, update you as to how we're preparing ourselves for the future. So that's what I came to do today, is talk about that. So let's talk about, I can't control what happens in Richmond or what happens in Washington. I can't control that. However, I can, with a great board and a great community behind me, I can do something about what we do in Louisa County and how we look after people, right? How we're kind to people, how we treat our folks, and I can do something about that, and that's a personal mission of mine. So that's what I'm here to do. So let me talk to you about what the Resource Council is doing. Operationally, we have been preparing for this moment for quite some time. First, we have been strengthening our relationships with local businesses, the faith-based community, Louisa County Public Schools, civics organizations, and we are looking to build new relationships, new partnerships with all of those groups that we have that maybe, like I said the other day, if we're not in a relationship with you or a partnership, let me know, we're going to figure out how to do it. If 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 we can figure out, that's what we're going to do. We have also, through the volunteering Louisa, we've increased our volunteer strength at Louisa Resource. In 2024, we did 21,000 hours of volunteerism at Louisa Resource Council, and I didn't catch them all. That's not every kid collecting cans or whatever, that's just what's going on at the resource, right? We have a brand-new walk-in refrigerator that we're putting in, and that refrigerator is so that we can store non-perishable goods, I should say perishable goods for longer, so that we can get a longer shelf life out of them, and that's what we're working on right now, so we can do that. We have renewed our relationship with Hunters for the Hungry. I don't think everybody realizes what that group does. We have two trailers in Louisa, one at the Resource Council, one at Science Crossroads. Last year, we partnered with one local hunt club, Elk Creek Hunt Club, they handle our deer for us. We did 12,000 pounds of venison last year.
Wow.
One pound, 12,000, that's a lot of tonnage, right? And we did that. Now, I'm going to tell you, all of those deer, you know, may not have come from Louisa. We like those Fluvanna people when they bring them over too, so. All right? We are, this is something new. This is something we had to do starting in July. We are running a continuous non-perishable food drive. Well, I've never had to do that in 10 years. I just had my anniversary there. We had a 3% reduction in USDA food. Now, I'm not talking about money, food. And so we're running a continuous non-perishable food drive. We've never done that, but it's working. Our community is stepping up. That's what I love about Louisa, is it steps up and they're helping us and they're getting this stuff doing. And one of the things that we do, everything, is we collect a lot of data, and we analyze it monthly, we look at what we're doing, we don't make decisions based on just anything at all. We use data, we look at what we're doing. In fact, we're tracking our unsheltered population right now, to the best of our ability, and that's a volunteer thing, and we know about how many unsheltered folks there are in Louisa. We don't know all of them that pass through, but we try to watch that. Now, financially, let me talk about, that was operationally, let me talk to you about what we're doing financially. We are very fortunate that we don't rely on any federal or state aid or grants. We don't. We get a little bit of money for some healthcare from the state, and when I say we don't, we are confident, let me say that again, we are confident with local help and our partnerships, our foundation grants, that we will remain in a position, okay, to cover the increase that we have. I want you to understand what I just said, because that's important. I want, that's what the message that I want to go to this community. We are confident that we're going to be able to take the increase, right? Now, I'm not going to paint you all roses and rainbows and all that stuff, because there is a lot going on in this community. We've seen a steady increase in clients since the fall of 2021. In 2025, we averaged 27 applications for service to households per month. Our foundational is we use a house, we use an address, and so we have seen 27 new applications each month. That's huge. We've never, in my time, ever experienced that. In 2024, when it was 16, when it was 16 new every month, I thought, man, it's crazy. This is this is really something going on, 27. Here is an even more telling number, and I like what Mr. Barnes said about affordable housing, let me share this with you. We are serving 11% more individuals this year in 2025, 11%. And why are we serving 11% more? We're not getting more houses, we're getting more people in the houses. There are more people. We have multi-generational families now living together. We, so Mrs. Southall, Vicki Southall, was talking today, and she said, you know, I used to, well, family would come up and they'd say they'd have three or four in the household, two, three, four. Today, it's not uncommon to hear six, eight people living in a house, multi-generational, because there's no housing. There's no housing. Mr. Barnes, you're a smart man, so that's a problem. And so, interesting, the average number of households is approximately the same, but when we look at that data, we know we're serving a much larger population. So that speaks to the deeper issue that that he was talking about with the housing. So with that said, let me close. Despite all that, we're living in our best Louisa, right? I really believe that. I said that the other day in a in a podcast, and we're living, and it's really, really good, and the next generation's even going to be better. We're doing great things. I just heard this economic report, all of these wonderful things, but I'm going to tell you something right now, folks, the most vulnerable people in Louisa County are more vulnerable today than they were yesterday. They are being, they are more vulnerable. The cost of housing, the cost of inflation, these things are impacting them. And so what I what I what I'm going to say, though, is that no one in Louisa County is going to go hungry if the Louisa County Resource Council hears about it or can do something about it. We're going to do everything in our power to do, and that's really what I wanted to say. We're going to be here, we're going to be here for our community, and we're going to be here to take care of it. No one will go hungry if we can do anything about it. I've given you some data, I've given you some hopefully inspiring, and thank you for your time, thank you for your commitment to the community. I'm very excited about all the things going on. I love coming to these meetings, they're awesome, you know, I get to learn a whole lot.
Come more often.
No, sir, I got another meeting I'd go to the same time as y'all, but anyway, questions?
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Runnet. If you had to summarize what the citizens of the county could do to to help the Resource Council in just some things in general, what would they be?
Oh, it's easy. So first of all, volunteer, come help us, come help us. We want you, we want you to be a part of our team. Volunteering Louisa, it's really easy, it's on our website, it's on your website, come fill out an application. Second thing, food drives, non-perishable, particularly when your gardens are overflowing, bring your stuff to us, right? Hey, listen, we're serving 1,900 households monthly, 1,900, somewhere between 1,850 and 1,900, right? We're doing about 11 to 12 emergencies. Those are people that we don't know, they could be homeless, but we we got most of them in the system, but they could be just people passing through. So food, bring food to us, right? And the second thing is always, we like to be good stewards of the money. I talked about the finances, I talked about the finances. It costs me more to operate that facility now and everything, a donation would be wonderful. A donation would be wonderful. We want to operate as a nonprofit, right? We're not looking for handouts or any of that, I'm not here, what I'm here to do to tell you is that those are the things that we need, right? Those are the, we need people, okay? We need people, and that's one of the things. What else you got?
And sorry, Mr. Williams, I sort of dazed out there for a sec. I just want to thank you, you and I have many conversations, we talk many times a week sometimes. Every time I call you, you take my call, you have helped so many families, you're so dedicated and passionate about this. It always seems like whenever I have a bizarre one, you have an answer for it.
Yeah.
And send them to us is your, you know, your your wording, send them to us. But just thank you for your, a leader is is what you are, and an organization is only as good as its leader, and you.
I'm humbled by that, but I'm going to tell you, man, we've got great people, and they have empathy, they have compassion, they truly care about our community, and not all of them are natives like me, Christian and stuff, we're natives, right? But many of you are from, you have come here, and we love you, and we are we are blessed to have you, right? Right? Well, anyway, I'll say that in the thing, but we're blessed, we have so many people that volunteer from the Lake Anna Community, from the Spring Creek Community, these are these are people that came here to serve.
Yeah.
And they caught the, what I call the contagious thing, the kindness bug. Everybody's getting the kindness bug. My mother had it, she she was the most empathetic and compassionate person I ever met, and I've had a great role model, and what I try to do is emulate that, make it contagious, spread it. I think there's a guy named Doug that does that too.
I think there is, I think I think you're right about that, but I just thank you for for your dedication to this community and having those answers. And don't you all have Santa coming up, the Santa Council?
Santa's coming, right? Santa's got a grown beard. He's lost a little weight since last year, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barnes.
I'm sure I can hold you much longer. I called Mr. Runnet this morning, he and I talked about several things, and I talked to Christian, but my real concern, my real concern is that if we have this snap situation that most people think is going to happen, because missing a meal ain't funny.
No, sir.
Not having anything to eat ain't funny.
No, sir.
And so we need to work together, this board has always been very good on supporting you, will continue, but I wanted to know where we were, and you helped me, if we have the snap situation.
I got your back.
You got it.
I have a question before I have a comment. So with winter time coming up, weather changing, getting colder, can you talk a little bit about the community clothes closet?
Oh, absolutely, yes, Wendy will love this. I'm manager, she'll take. So first of all, we have, let me say this about the community closet, yes, we do sell things, but we give away just as many. I can tell you, Mrs. Runnet, who runs the kindness closet at the high school, calls all the time, and we deliver free clothes. So if a child needs a coat, if a child needs shoes, if a child needs any kind of thing like that, we have it. Rachel's talked to me about, she's called me about those items. If they need food, we deliver food to the schools, right? We deliver food, those kinds of things. So yes, we do that. While you're speaking of that, I'll tell you that we also have a great wood ministry we work with, so if so if somebody needs wood, I'm going to, I'm going to get 100 calls now.
Firewood you're talking about.
Yeah, firewood, yes, sir. Yeah, firewood, firewood, sir. Yeah, so anyway, we've got a great firewood ministry, and they they will deliver, they will deliver wood, so all kinds of stuff. But we, you know, I'm going to tell you, what's really cool about what I got to do is that 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 last sentence in our mission statement calls essential services. Essential services is everything else, we catch it all, right? So I don't know, start with us and we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know y'all have time here.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, yes, sir. Yeah, give them a hand, they do a phenomenal job.
They do.
Next is a resolution adopting the Louisa County Public Outdoor Art Program policy, which we pulled off of the consent agenda at, I think, Mr. Barlow's request.
Well, I'll start with, I move we approve it, and then we can have discussion, maybe, how about that? Is that appropriate?
I think we need to have the discussion first.
We'll have the discussion first. Mr. Coon?
Supervisor Barlow had asked to pull it off, so I'll stand ready to answer any questions.
What I was looking at, as I told you, was not to have these type of things in consent agenda, to at least have some discussion about what it was, so I would leave it to you to explain briefly a summary of what item number eight was about.
So this is essentially a program where, just like we've done with the Tourism MOU or the events that Cindy spoke, excuse me, spoke about, that just won the award, this is a different category that focuses on outdoor art programs, so people can file if they want to do something either on their building or potentially on one of the county buildings if it would be deemed necessary or appropriate, and then we would go through the Tourism Advisory Committee to get a recommendation with cost and draft artwork, and bring it to this board to review the artwork and the potential cost, and if you all deem that it's a reasonable expense and the benefit is there, then you can vote for it. You all would have the final say on the artwork as well as the funding mechanism.
I think that's primarily what I want, I read through this thing, and there's an awful lot of work that's gone into it, and the the key that I was looking for, you have a committee, you have people that are involved with it, but I think when you go down to the last slide where it says review and oversight, it does come back to the board to see what type of artwork is going to be out into the community and whether it's fitting the goals and stuff. And that's that's the issue I had, because until I read through all of this thing, I really didn't know who had the oversight on it, and, you know, one person considers art, somebody else may consider offensive. So that's the reason, I think, before something gets out and the board gets associated with it, we at least get to know what it is that's going out and that type of thing.
Yes, sir. So what you have before you today is essentially the guardrails that would need to be abided by before they would even be able to apply and make it to the Tourism Advisory Board, and then go from there to you all.
I was going to pull number nine, but Mr. Barnes pulled that one out, so I'll let him discuss that, but I had same similar things. There's a tremendous amount of work that went into this. The planning mission worked on gateways and stuff like that for ages, and I don't know exactly how many pages is associated with this thing, but it's huge. And there again, the primary thing I want to make sure is that it's not a committee or a small group that determines what is appropriate to go out and spend taxpayer money on, so it does come back to the board, who's accountable, and have you, and so it's got that in here, that this also has that forward final say on it. So with that, it's satisfied my concern, I just don't like seeing stuff like this in the consent agenda, and it needs to be out for discussion, and I'll leave the rest to Mr. Barnes.
I think you drew separately, Mr. Sir.
I move, I move we approve the resolution, Louisa County Public Outdoor Art Program policy.
Second.
Properly moved to second, and that we approve this resolution, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
All right, 2.3 seconds. Can you pull up that picture of the lady?
I don't think we have that on the.
You got it on that, on the presentation.
On the water tower.
Yeah, on the water tower. Okay. All right, that picture, I might be the only board member feel like that.
It's on page.
This one?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-four.
If we're going to have a signature Louisa picture.
Wouldn't it be her?
Well, her or the LC, I don't care, but I think that we need to have a discussion as a board. Coming into Louisa to send a message that, and I don't care if we do a contest in the schools, I really don't care, you know, what you want in the water tower, I don't care, but me personally, that particular picture, I I got an issue with it, and I may be the only board member like that, and I just thought I'd bring it up.
I got a question.
Mr. Williams.
We're not adopting the picture here tonight, are we? We're adopting the plan.
No, we're adopting the plan.
We're not adopting images, we're adopting plan, is that right? Like we plan to put something on.
In the board packet, it said it was a recommendation from two board members.
Yeah, this this is to clear up any confusion, this is to adopt the signed implementation plan. The renderings that are in the packet are examples, we are not adopting that tonight. You're not the only board member, by the way.
I didn't think we were.
And anything, just to clarify again what Mr. Barlow said, what Mr. Barnes said, any image that would ever be approved would be approved by the Board of Supervisors and not by someone.
And not tonight.
Not, and not tonight.
And not tonight.
I'm fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, I was going to say, we, this this image is just one of many images that we've been working our way through and down, and the little birdie was my idea, because the Cardinal, for the state, but this is, we've been through many.
So no exception to the bird?
Yeah, the little birdie.
You're good with the bird?
We've got to work on it, let's work on it.
The little birdie can stay? No. Anyway, but we've had many, this is just one that we've worked our way down to, but if it's something that doesn't please everyone on the board, it's absolute, we can absolutely work on it and come with something that.
It's a work in progress, that's all.
Could we replace the Cardinal with a wild turkey?
No, we have to leave the little birdie, but no, all joking aside.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Barnes wasn't the only one who I thought.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Barnes wasn't the only one who, I thought that I understood how the packet was, but I talked to Ms. King today, and she clarified to me that this was not, that going forward, everything would be board's final decision. But because the water tower was number one on the list, and the way the verbiage was above it, I think it could be taken either way. So I'm glad that it's working out this way, but I as well think we need to do some work on that.
But doesn't it say on it that the design will be approved separately?
Absolutely, but I think it can be interpreted that the designs are there, that's number one on the list. And so, you know, I just wanted to be clear.
Clarification's always good.
Well, I agree with that.
Clarification's always good.
You know, but I do think we have some work to do. When I looked at the picture, I thought the woman was fly fishing. And so, anyway, it's, I think we'll get it all worked out.
Yeah, we will.
This discussion, the discussion is exactly the reason I wanted to pull that. These things, we can take a few minutes to discuss stuff and clarify, you know, what it is we're doing. And it just wasn't appropriate to be in the consent agenda. I didn't like.
Chairman, I move we approve number nine, less the images.
Second.
And properly moved and second that we approve number nine, less the images, which were examples to begin with. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. We now move to a res, excuse me, a resolution to adopt the county's 2026 legislative platform. Mr. Goodwin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if you'd like to follow along in your packet, I'm going to work down from page 86. A number of these are repeats from prior years in our platform, as some of them will also be repeats in the Planning District Commission's platform and in VACO's platform, as well some of these, some common threads running through all three. But starting with the first one, local zoning control was a holdover from last year. I added a sentence about rural preservation to the top of that, given our renewed focus on the importance of that in the county. So something important to watch in the General Assembly as we do anticipate that there could be other concerns surfacing in the 2026 session. Broadband, that is a holdover from last year. We're finishing our project, but still support any state efforts to aid in anything we might do in the future, as well as other localities as well. Moving to the bottom, we talked about that item a little bit in the past as well, but just as a brief example, deputies or teachers, the state only funds a portion of the deputies and teachers necessary in a county like Louisa. And so when the state changes funding levels for the level of the specific function in question, that isn't enough funding coming from the state to fund the entire increase necessary in a locality like Louisa. And Louisa is certainly not alone in funding functions that are greater than the level that the state contemplates. Moving down to state library funding, there was some movement last year. Now I'm on the top of page 87. There was some movement last year to fully fund state libraries. There is a gap left there. I spoke with the JMR, the Jefferson Madison Regional Libraries Director. He did ask that we put that in again this year, so I've maintained that. We've had a request from local representatives of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It's my understanding that the state appropriation for FY '26 is a half a million dollars short of what it was in the prior fiscal year. They are requesting full funding of 1.65 million, starting in 2026, so that's there. Mr. McCotter, our colleagues on the Lake Anna Advisory Committee and LACCA will appreciate, I'm sure, if you all would leave the piece about buoy maintenance and hydrola treatment in there. There's a 10-year history of what we have paid for those efforts in the past, and state assistance in that regard would be helpful, and also in freshwater harmful algae blooms. In my county administrator's report this year, I'll talk about it briefly when we get there as well, but there is a letter from, I believe, five representatives in the General Assembly requesting that the governor put funding into his recommended budget for next year, funding for what is turning out to be a phosphorus mitigation project in Lake Anna. And so having that in the recommended budget, as opposed to putting it in in kind of a caboose effort, I think would be good. So asking that you all consider putting that in there. Moving down to page 88, equal revenue authority, fairly self-explanatory, jail costs is a perennial interest of Louisa and many localities across the state, just to have the state pick up more of its fair share. I left the item in there towards the bottom of the page about small modular reactors, asking for continued state support of those efforts, as North Anna is a leading candidate for the state's first SMR. Moving down to development road reviews, and on to the top of page 89, Mr. Barlow, I left our stance on VDOT in there from last year. And the last was an addition during some discussions that we had this year regarding dog and cat licensure. The Commonwealth does compel licensure of dogs and cats in the state as part of its rabies vaccination efforts, especially given the fact that we now accept lifetime licenses in Louisa County. It seems that perhaps those efforts might be handled in other ways without compelling citizens to buy licenses for animals. So that concludes my prepared remarks on the draft legislative platform. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. This is in draft. If you have additions or changes, please let me know. I would like to ask for your adoption tonight. We may tweak it as the session, as we get closer to the session and move into the session as well. But happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. McCotter, real quick on buoy maintenance. I know buoy maintenance used to be done by volunteer. Is it still being done by volunteer?
Lake Anna Advisory Committee has entered into agreement with a local provider to do that, because the duties of that are stripped of those of the volunteer capacity.
So what is the estimated cost for next year for buoy maintenance?
Twelve thousand dollars.
So I guess to my second point, which is number two, what was the hydrola treatment this year?
About twenty-five thousand dollars.
So I think the table maybe should come out, is what I'm saying. Given historic, things are changing, and I don't think the data from the historic are accurate, and maybe we should take table out. I think the words are appropriate, but the table's probably not appropriate.
No problem. I can put in LAC's anticipated budget for next year if you want.
Maybe that's a better thing to do. I think, you know, they were doing buoys by, they were just buying cords and anchors and buoys, and they were, for 20 years, the ladies put buoys in the lake, did a wonderful job. And so I just don't think that's reasonable, being you got to pay somebody not to do it. So anyway, that's all. That's my, thank you for putting it together.
Anything else?
Anything else? All right, we haven't much.
One second.
I do have a comment, though, before we go on. No, sorry. We talked about the state funding levels and the flexibility, and you touched on that. But I think it's important that the taxpayers of this county understand why we have that in there. You mentioned the Sheriff's Department's a perfect example. If we have 90 employees in the Sheriff's Department, and 45 of them are compensation board employees, and the General Assembly passes a 5% pay raise, that 5% pay raise only goes to the 45 comp, comp-supported, comp board employees. And what the position of this board has been for a number of years is that's not fair that, you know, the person beside you gets a pay raise, and you don't get a pay raise because you're not a comp board employee based on the state's formulas. So what that means is the county has made up the difference so that across the board, every deputy gets the same pay raise. Now, that when our legislators in Richmond like to send out press releases that we gave the teachers a 5% pay raise, or the deputies, but they only fund half of it, that the financial burden falls on the county. That's really just an unfunded mandate.
That's correct.
And so the reason that's important is because we have to figure out how to be fair and equitable to the people that are on the front lines every day, and that means we either don't accept that money, we're not fairly compensating people across the board, where the county has to make up the financial difference. That, I just think that deserved a little bit deeper of an explanation, because it really goes to education, law enforcement, firing MS, those are really the impacted, the impacted departments. So anyway, it's been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
With Mr. Williams at it.
Pardon?
With Mr. Williams at it.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution approval of performance agreement with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority. Mr. Wade.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair. Sorry. Members of the board, if you recall, in November of 2023, the board entered into a performance agreement with ADS, Amazon Data Centers, Amazon Data Services, Inc., which established local grant payments that the county would pay to AWS over the years. Just to recall, the source of funding for those grant payments is money derived 100% from AWS and their annual tax payments to the county. Just to give an example, and I've done this before, but in our first tier of incentive payments, we have agreed to pay them 15% of whatever they pay into the county coffers in that given year. So if they pay $100 in year one, we turn around and write them a check back for 15% or $15. The county keeps $85 or 85% of that total revenue that AWS paid. The resolution before you tonight is to consider a performance agreement between the county and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, VEDP, that establishes reporting requirements tied to those local grants that we previously approved in the performance agreement from November of 2023, in accordance with Virginia Code 59.1-284.42, which stipulates that the local grants should match the state grants on a two-to-one ratio. The county's reporting requirements, and that's what the gist of the performance agreement of VEDP is, is we have to report to them annually what we're granting back to AWS. There are three things we have to do. We have to provide an annual local match report due on April 1st of every year, that reports what we granted to them in the preceding calendar year. Second is a final local match, which is due to VEDP on October 1st of 2040, which is the total amount of grants we paid from Report 1 through October 1st of 2040. And then the final certification is where VEDP will, a cumulative total of what we've paid in local match funding. And this is important, if the local match is not at least two times the Commonwealth's, AWS is, may be responsible for paying back a portion of the state's grant that the state gave to AWS. The county is not obligated to pay anything back to the Commonwealth if the two-to-one match is not realized. The performance agreement between the county and VEDP also does not do the following, does not create any additional obligations by the county to AWS outside of what is already approved in the performance agreement from November 2023. And it does not limit the amount of grants or any other obligations to the county or AWS under the existing grant agreement. What you're approving tonight is to allow us to report annual local match reports through the year 2040, and one final cumulative report to VEDP in 2040. That concludes my remarks. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you elaborate on, you've mentioned 2040 four times, why that's so important?
Yes, in our, in our November of 2023, I think it's the sixth time I mentioned that, but the first tier of incentives runs through the year 2040. So we start incentive payments or grant payments in 2026. The first tranche of those ends expires in 2040. If AWS reaches certain milestone, capital investment milestones, then that number, that grant period extends to 2045, 2046.
What if they don't?
Then it stops in 2040.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jim.
I, you explained it well, but I do see some confused faces out in our audience and some questions. Could you just summarize, especially before you started to get to the code section, the beginning part of your presentation? Just to clarify, not at such a high level, but maybe more of a basic level, I just see some confused faces when you're talking about Amazon and matches and grants.
Yeah, let me try. So in November of 2023, the board approved a performance agreement between the county and AWS ADS. In that agreement, the county had approved to grant AWS certain grant payments on an annual basis based on the capital investment made, and the source of that grant payment is revenue that AWS pays to the county on an annual basis. So in my example, if they paid $100, we would grant them back $15, 15% or.
But they've paid us that $100.
Yeah, so they've paid us 100% of $100. We're turning around and granting them back a percentage of that on an annual basis through 2040.
Okay, I think that.
Yeah, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCotter.
To follow up on Rachel, I'm not confused about that, but I would like to know and better understand, because I've read this four times, and I think your explanation is fantastic, and it's helped me understand 80% of it, but I'm trying to understand, and I don't think, I was not part of that performance agreement back in 2023, but for number seven time mentioning the year 2023. What are the grants being used for? It says something to do with full-time jobs created and maintained. That seems to me an obvious question. I'm not against what we're doing here, I'm fully.
Yeah, so the county's grant that we agreed to is to help reimburse AWS for infrastructure that they are building out for the county, you know, over the course of the, through 2040. So as you know, that infrastructure project, capital project is over $100 million, and some of that grant money will go back to reimburse AWS for those costs.
So how much was the existing tax revenue that we're going to be paying in this grant to AWS? Zero, correct?
Zero.
Because it comes from tax revenue that AWS, so it's new tax revenue that AWS pays to county. And this is all triggered by bipartisan legislation from Richmond, which is how we eventually attracted this investment. I would just, I would just point that out, so.
That's true.
All right, any other questions?
It's net new revenue derived from the company.
So move.
I'll second.
And properly moved and second that we approve this performance agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Committee reports? I don't know that we have any committee reports. Do you have one, Mr. McCotter?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Briefly, I didn't do it last meeting, but the Lake Anna Advisory Committee has met before the last meeting. We released reserve funds to treat additional, two additional areas of Hydrola in Spotsylvania and Louisa County, larger being in Louisa County. We have now spent over $25,000 in one year on Hydrola management for 50 acres. We are going to review the Hydrola management program this winter, working with Dominion and DWR, because we feel like we need to update it. Also, our lax budget request for 2027 will be a reflection of the new needs to meet Hydrola management. My report.
Question, well, two, based on that last sentence. I assume that that budget request, all three counties will be reflected in, especially in Spotsylvania, correct?
All three counties will have the same type of needs expressed.
What's the water temperature on the lake now? Because Hydrola starts to die off at 65 degrees.
Seventy-two, die three, 68 midlake, about 62 uplake. So senescence is about to occur on the main lake.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Anyway, any other committee reports? All right, board appointments. I don't believe we have board appointments. County Administrator report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I have several items to bring to your attention. Perhaps most importantly, the survey on the county's comprehensive plan went live this afternoon just before the board meeting. We'll be releasing it on social media this evening right after the board meeting and putting out a press release as well. For those here in the room and watching online, the comprehensive plan is required by state law of all counties. It has to be updated every five years, and it is a really, a document that's intended to shape the county's vision for the future, and it guides the board's decisions on growth and development and a variety of other things. So please encourage your constituents to provide their feedback. I know you all deeply care about it, staff certainly does as well. So that survey, again, is live on our website right now, and will be shared more widely later this evening. Just moving quickly through some items that are in my report, on page 152, there's information from Dominion on what they term their Kraken Transmission Line Project. This is a line that would go from North Anna, kind of northeast out of the county, a high voltage.
What are they called?
Kraken, just like it sounds.
That's what you said.
Yeah. I don't make these things up.
With a kraken.
Release the kraken.
Different than the Valley Link Project, which is the one that I've told you a little bit more about in the past, but there is information on page 152 and the subsequent pages on that. The letter regarding phosphorus remediation.
The letter regarding phosphorus remediation starts on page 158. There's, there's a report from the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative on the Fiber Grant Project in Louisa and other counties on page 163 and following pages. A reminder that Household Hazardous Waste Day will be this Saturday, the 25th, at the Louisa County Sanitary Landfill. Your September monthly reports are included in the packet in great detail. Review them, ask me questions. Happy to try to answer them. And then last but not least, a, a new event in Louisa this year called Treats on the Tarmac. This is something that's put together by airport, airport manager Brittany Shoup. Great idea to, to get children out to the airport. The young and the young at heart. They'll be open, and we have some pilots that have volunteered to open their hangars up and provide candy. It'll be next week on the 20, 30th, on the 30th, so not on Halloween evening. But we, we're thinking at first, well, it'll be a small event in the first year, and hopefully we'll get a few people. There has been a great deal of interest, and we're working through areas that we can park people. And so maybe some growing pains associated with this year, but it's going to be a fun event, and, and we're excited about it, so.
What time?
That is a great question. 4:30 to 7:30. Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
So move. Second.
Properly moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, meeting adjourned.